High Point City Council for a manager's briefing. Here, present with us in the room are all members of council save council member Peters. This is a manager's briefing and not a special meeting, so we actually don't have to adopt our agenda. So we'll move straight into presentation items. First, we have 2024-399. That's a departmental overview from our IT department. And with us, Mr. Adam Ward, Director of IT Services. How are we doing today?
Doing well, Mayor. How about you?
Thank you.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. We can handle this. I mean, I've got a, I guess, last slide in the deck is for questions. But having taught a college course before in the past, you know, I'm as willing to be as interactive as the group would like to be. So today, we'll be talking about the IT Services Department. That department is unique in its design, but very well suited in the way that it's built out. And what I mean by that is that we've got three related, but somewhat disparate divisions. So those divisions are 911 Communications Operations, Radio Systems Operations, and Information Technology. So pictured here in front of us, this is the data center at 1730 West Chester, the Police Department. And down beneath that is the 911 Telecommunications Center, also located at the Police Department. So we'll lead out with 911 Telecommunications. Mission statements to provide professional 911 service to the citizens and public safety agencies. The city of High Point utilizing team-oriented, professional, courteous, and highly-trained telecommunications. Some of our biggest recognitions this year has been North Carolina APCO. APCO is one of the governing bodies. APCO and NINA are one of the two governing bodies that orchestrate 911 telecommunications centers nationwide. So in that recognition, Baker Team was recognized for their unique use of Rapid SOS to handle a hostage situation. So Rapid SOS is kind of a step above and beyond being able to track a cell or telephone just based on GPS coordinates alone. It is a mobile application that telecommunications can deploy to a cellphone in real time. And what that gives us, the ability to be able to do is determine not only X and Y coordinates on GPS, also Z axis, so we can tell where somebody is, what level floor that they're on. In addition to that, we can turn on their microphone. We can view their phone screen. And in addition to that, we're able to view the camera. So in this particular scenario, there was an individual that had called into 911 and they were watching over a Facebook Live feed. It's a private feed, a hostage situation that was unfolding. Well, because it was a private feed, the Police Department wouldn't have any access to be able to view the hostage situation. So there happened to be another individual that was there with a caller. We, with their permission, deployed Rapid SOS to their cellphone. And they pointed one cellphone at the next and were able to capture that live stream and then be able to convey what was going on to the hostage negotiation team for the High Point Police Department. And they were able to successfully mitigate that circumstance with no loss of life. Next recognition was International APCO. That was held in Orlando, Florida. You're talking about 911 telecommunications agencies all across the United States. Mexico, Puerto Rico, even Great Britain, and several other countries. We were recognized and reaccredited for our High Point 911 Basic Telecommunicator Program. So that is the eight-month program that every telecommunicator that gets hired onboard with the city of High Point. That's that eight-month program that they engage in in order to learn how to do call handling and radio dispatch. Then our other bit of recognition, 911 Board PSAP review conducted by the state of North Carolina. The audit ensured that we're compliant with general statutes and North Carolina administrative codes. And we passed with no discrepancies found. So here's our organization chart for 911 telecommunications. I'm up here at the top. This gentleman here, that's Kyle Thaggert. He was our manager for 911 telecommunications. He's now the Assistant Director. So we've got an opening for the manager position. Reporting to the manager, of course, is an administrative specialist who's in charge of handling the 911 grant budget. And we've got a part-time quality assurance specialist who listens to all 911 telecommunications calls and ensures that all the citizens that are calling in are receiving quality service. And then down beneath that, we've got each one of the teams along with the telecommunications that report to those four teams. So here's a quick video about 911 telecommunications recorded by our dispatchers with the help of Mark.
High Point 911, what's the address of your emergency?
I became a telecommunicator because I have a heart to truly serve. Serving the community, serving those that we even see on a day-to-day basis. And it just strays from what I've always done previous. So serving was what I wanted to, what I needed to do, and what I devoted to do. And so I would have to say, being able to serve.
I've been talking to get another perspective from where I started. I started at Public Services and had that side of the radio. So I wanted to see where it all manifested from.
I became a telecommunicator. Initially, it started off, I actually wanted to go into law enforcement. I've always just wanted to serve my community and be a part of public safety. I ended up finding myself in dispatching. Thought that maybe that would be a good stepping stone for law enforcement, but I ended up falling in love with it. And it just definitely satisfies that want to be a part of public safety and also serve the community.
That's a great job. The people you work with are amazing. You really get that sense of team. And your content and open feedback every day, you know, you go home and it's really a sense of accomplishment.
So that gives you a little bit of insight into the telecommunications. Matter of fact, the team that was in that video was Baker Team. The same one that was recognized for their unique use of Rapid SOS. All right. So from the perspective of how many telephone calls does a 911 telecommunications center receive in a year? So let's take a look at 2023's call volume. So 89,707 emergency services calls. Calls put in from citizens. Vast majority of our administrative calls. Those are typically coordination calls where the, we're in touch with the Police Department, Fire Department, Guilford County EMS. So those are a bit more management calls. And other municipalities, that may include several other functions as well. Their administrative lines may handle things like utility services dispatch. It all depends on the size of the municipality. But in our instance, we've got a customer service department, so we don't field very many of those telephone calls. So a vast majority of that 132,125 calls that you see up there, that's coordination with emergency services in the field. So that makes a total call volume processed of 221,833 calls. Of those calls, we were able to meet state standards, which is for all the emergency services calls coming in from citizens, 90% of the time were to answer those calls in 10 seconds or less. We're actually closer to 92%, so we're above that state guideline. So let's get into the Radio Systems Division. Its mission statement is to provide mission-critical land-mobile radio network to support High Point public safety, core municipal departments, and partner agencies. So we're not just talking about necessarily municipal departments, but also several of our neighbors like the city of Archdale, Guilford County, the Viper system through, that's utilized by the state troopers, High Point University, or several of the other organizations that utilize our radio systems. Here's their organizational chart. They're one of our smaller divisions. So Department Director, myself, Lee Stanley, our Radio Systems Manager, and then three Radio Systems technicians. So in 2024, everybody in the Radio Systems Division was able to get certified with their FCC or Federal Communications Commission General Radio Telephone Operator License, which not only qualifies them to work on our radio tower sites, but above and beyond that, they're able to work on radar systems in police cars and stuff like that and perform that recalibration function. Matter of fact, we assist Guilford County with that particular function as well, so we hold that certification. So some key details behind our radio infrastructure. We've got 857 portable radios. Three tower sites. That includes one primary 300-foot tower just down the road from us here at Commerce. And then two secondary radio tower sites. One at Sunnyvale and the other located at Riverdale. City leases tower space to Verizon as well as the State Highway Patrol Viper radio system. Many of you may have heard of Viper. It's been, you know, in the press quite a bit recently. That was one of the first systems to get back online and operational in the western part of the state in order to be able to coordinate rescue efforts. City of Greensboro and Thomasville also co-locate radio equipment, primarily antennas on our towers. And the city of, or excuse me, the city of Archdale and High Point University utilize our radio core. So they're actually dependent on us for radio services. So some operational facts. Our portable, mobile radios have an eight-year lifespan. Each portable radio costs $6,144.52. A large portion of that is made up in feature licensing. So take, for instance, the city of High Point encrypts all radio traffic, so we have to carry an encryption license. Portable radios now support redundancy. Not only do they support land-mobile radio, but they've got onboard built-in GPS. They now have built-in LTE. They have tip-over sensors. So if an officer gets tackled in the field and they're spending a long period of time on their back, it sends an interruption alarm into the 911 telecommunications center. And we can have the ability then to be able to determine whether or not that there is something going on with an officer that we've lost communications with. So there's several fairly unique technologies built into that small form factor. And they're very robust, very ruggedized. Matter of fact, in a demonstration that I saw at Motorola Innovations in South Carolina, one of the presenters took out a combat knife and was gouging the screen on the front of one of the APX radios. Not a single scratch. Matter of fact, Lee Stanley, the manager at Radio Shop, he's told me about portable radios ending up in the, down in Oak Hollow. And they've been able to successfully salvage them from the water, locate where their position is, send in a diving team after them, recover them, and they still continue functioning. Our radio systems, as of this year, have been upgraded to support AES, which is now a requirement in order to do communication with our federal partners and the FBI, as well as TDMA, which is required by the State Highway Patrol. So what TDMA allows for you to do is you're only allocated a set number of frequencies or channels by the FCC. And communicating with them in an analog fashion, you can only do, you know, a talk group on a channel at a time. What TDMA stands for is Time Division Multiplexing. So it's a way to make those analog signals digital. And then you can end up breaking up those channels into sub-channels to then allow hundreds of portable radios to still utilize the same frequency and communicate at the same time. Next up is our Information Technology Division. Its mission statement is to provide information technology infrastructure and support to municipal staff, to third parties, in support of citizens and organizations served by the city. Some recognition for the Information Technology Division within the year 2024. We had a pen test exercise done by the National Guard. So they actually came on premise for a week. They conducted a social engineering exercise, which basically means that they're sending out emails, making telephone calls in an effort to try to manipulate staff or other individuals so that they could gain access to key city infrastructure. And then in addition to that, they actually conduct system audits. Look for vulnerabilities, attempt to exploit those as well. No major findings coming out of this. Additionally, we've upgraded our internet bandwidth. So on the low-most fiber side, we've gone from one gig, one gigabit to 10 gigabits as far as our internet connectivity. So that's preparing us for the future, for when that we have to start hosting more multimedia services. In addition to that, our citywide wireless in the downtown area, also at city facilities, we have now successfully transitioned over to Wi-Fi 5E. And in addition to that, we've partnered with Edron, which gives Guilford County students the ability to be able to come out to any city facility, any city park, where that we've got wireless connectivity. They can use their Chromebooks and they can start to do their homework right there on the spot. So they'll join up with the Edron network, establish VPN connectivity, and they'll have access to all the same resources that they would have access to in the classroom.
Can you remind us, Adam, of all the, I guess, I know it's not at every single park in the city, but it's at all the major ones?
All the major parks, correct. We're working on a partnership to potentially address those other parks, those smaller areas. So there's been some discussion around that as to, as far as acquisition of data connectivity surrogates and then using some wireless equipment to then be able to broadcast that network in those locations. That way, an individual can, you know, pull into a parking lot at that smaller park and be able to access those same resources.
If a student and their family is just curious, trying to find a location where there is wireless and they're not sure if a park has it or not, where can they find that information?
So that information is hosted on Guilford County Schools website. If they look up Edron, they'll see locations of accessibility in the city of High Point and in the city of Greensboro. And with that will come up a location map of all the facilities where that they can access.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely. So this is our organization chart for Information Technology Services. It's roughly about the same size as, from a staffing perspective, is 911 telecommunications. So there at the top would be myself, Virginia Baskins, who's the Assistant Director, and a financial specialist, Betsy Harden, who assists in helping us maintain our nearly $14 million budget. who assists in helping us maintain our nearly fourteen-million-dollar budget. And then in addition to that, we've got each one of the teams. So we've got an Infrastructure Manager. His team is primarily responsible for all of the hardware that's within the data center. So everything from servers to virtualization environments, Windows, Linux, those are the sort of things that that team addresses. IT Network and Security Manager, responsible for both wired and wireless connectivity all across the city of High Point, within city facilities, and also our publicly-hosted Wi-Fi network. Like I said, in addition to, and just given the title there, cybersecurity also reports because they're two like functions. The way that most malactors would gain access to municipal systems would be through the city's municipal network. So it's a good pairing to have those two functions together. IT Systems and Applications Manager, so any of our information systems hosted here at the city of High Point or hosted up in third-party cloud environments where we collaboratively work with the vendor in order to support municipal staff. That manager and his team is responsible for. And then we've got GIS Manager, and most importantly, our IT User Support Manager as well.
I imagine the cybersecurity position is the one, whenever people get emails from me asking for fifty gift cards, that's the person who's kind of checking on that?
Correct. So it'd be a combination.
By the way, if you get an email from me asking for you to go buy gift cards, never ever buy the gift card.
Yeah, but you're absolutely right. That would be that individual. And so that manager and then these two individuals here would be handling the response and coordination of that. So to give you some ideas as far as the sort of infrastructure that we maintain, telephony, so the municipal phone system. I looked that up before coming to do the presentation. Right now, at current, we've got one thousand one hundred and four phones that we maintain in a partnership with Segra. In addition to that, we maintain the Customer Service Call Center in all Verizon Mobile and MiFi hotspots that would be used by Public Safety and Customer Service Utilities Dispatch. In addition to that, we handle compute, desktops, laptops, MCTs. MCTs are mobile command terminals. Just think ruggedized laptops specifically for public safety is what that means. And printers. As far as infrastructure, we handle servers, firewalls, routers, switches, and wireless access points. And then physical security, card readers, and video cameras. So we partner very heavily with the Police Department. One of our big initiatives now is the Real-Time Crime Center. So we've worked with the Police Department in order to get all the municipal cameras loaded into FUSIS or the Real-Time Crime Center. As far as information technology systems, we host N4 Lawson, which is our Enterprise Resource Planning System. So all major finance and human resources functions are wrapped up into that project, or I should say product. Kianta, which is our utility billing platform. City Works, which is Public Service Asset Management System. Exela, planning and land use. Central Square, computer-aided dispatch and records management. So all the records maintained by the Police Department. SmartRec, that's for orchestrating events and charging for the events that occur at parks and recreation. And several other smaller information systems like Questica, which would be budget. Granicus, which we're working on a project to replace, which hosts agendas, minutes, and SmartRec. Questions?
I've got no rules for this church. We are condemnatorials.
I've got an IT guy to help with that. Any questions for Adam?
I'm just curious how many nine-one-one calls are emergency calls? Because we have the non-emergency number for folks to call if something's going on without calling nine-one-one. I'm just curious if you, how many nine-one-one calls are not sort of true emergency kinds of call?
So we had kind of broken that out, I guess, in that previous slide. So we take about six hundred and fourteen calls daily. Of those emergency calls within a year span of time, that's eighty-nine thousand seven hundred and seven calls are emergency calls. Those calls that are non-emergency would be one hundred and thirty-two thousand one hundred and twenty-five calls. So again, those are primarily based around coordination and response.
Okay, so I guess a member of the general public calling for something that's not an emergency would be categorized as another kind of call?
That would be categorized as an administrative call, correct.
Any other questions for Adam regarding IT Department?
I'd like to just state, the years I've been on, it's amazing how much, as we continue and technology continues to improve in every department and facet, it's a large, large amount of money that continues to be pushed as we continue to chase the investments of technology.
Thank you for answering that question there, Brett. So in terms of innovation, obviously, the world is embracing AI. Is there an implementation strategy around AI and its features and functions for our department, IT department?
So we've released a series of guidelines around AI implementation to date. I think the key takeaway for all municipal staff that are interacting with AI technology, we need to make certain that sensitive, protected data types like personally identifiable information, criminal justice information, is not put into AI. Because as we well know, the prompts that we put in, the data that we put in for AI to conduct analysis on is becoming part of the large language model. So my team has been looking at providing, I guess, municipal departments the ability to be able to interact with those sort of sensitive data types using local large language models, which means that that information does not go out to the internet to be processed. But we are leading some rather unique innovations as it relates to AI technologies. Matter of fact, one thing that we're going to adopt into our training program for nine-one-one telecommunications, how many of you have messed around with ChatGPT, particularly the mobile app? Has anybody interacted with the advanced voice function? Yep?
Fantastic. It's the old crew.
The boomers have it.
Imagine this, and I had demonstrated this for Eric the other day. So I sat down with that app, switched into that mode. I said, are you capable of role-playing? It responded back in the affirmative. I said, okay, well, I would like for you to play the role of an individual in the city of High Point calling into nine-one-one telecommunications to report a traffic accident. I said, use locations, telephone numbers, landmarks, all pertinent to the city of High Point. I want for you to modulate the inflection of your voice to show fear. And I told it, we'll begin the conversation when I say nine-one-one or High Point nine-one-one, what's your emergency? It responded back and said, standing by. So I then started, High Point nine-one-one, what's your emergency? Instantly, it picked out an address off of Eastchester, made up two vehicles that had collided with each other, described one of the drivers as having suffered a concussion. Key details, and very, very realistic, very, very lifelike. So I was able to demonstrate that for our communications training officers early last week. And they're already starting the process of interacting with that large language model. And they feel very easily that that can be adopted and used for phone training so that we can have telecommunications trainees engage with a realistic scenario without having to necessarily put them on the phone and incur risk.
Fantastic.
Adam, thank you so much. We appreciate you taking time to do this overview of your department. Please pass along our commendations and appreciation for the work that your team's doing.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is 2024-403. Coming before us will be Managing Director Jerome Hollis. This is focused on the One High Point Commission Implementation Update. Staff's requesting that City Council prioritize specific implementation areas for which we'd like more research to be conducted. And with that, I'll pass it to Mr. Hollis.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council. As part of what Council approved April first as the implementation process for the One High Point Commission recommendations, we've asked Leah Henry, Vice President of the National Institute of Minority Economic Development, to come up. She's going to speak to you briefly. She's going to give you progress of where they are thus far, give Council some general outlines of sort of putting forward the next groups of tasks that you want to get more information on. She's also going to have some rough estimates of dollars that would be further clarified with more information on specific implementation areas. So I'll ask Leah if she will come forward at this time.
Good afternoon. Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Ten, and Members of Council, Members of the public. We're very happy to be back before you to give you an update and to go into the next steps of this process. With me, as Mr. Hollis said, I'm one of four Vice Presidents of the National Institute of Minority Economic Development, and I lead our work in community economic development research and policy. I have with me today two colleagues, Shantica Kent and Amanda Austin, and they are supporting me in this project. So we've got a lot of slides to get through. I will not just stand here and read them, but we wanted to ensure that the public had a presentation that gave them enough background information to be able to understand what we talked about today. So we'll cover our progress to date, go over some of the history and background of the One High Point Commission. We'll talk about potential funding sources because we know that's top of mind. We'll go through some policy areas of the recommendations. And then we will hopefully have enough time to get to a prioritization of policies through an anonymous poll, which will be a real-time. You have been given a QR code and a URL for the poll and instructions, in case you need the instructions written out and how to use it. And we will let you know when it's time to go to that. And then we'll talk about what the next steps are once we complete the poll. As the previous presenter, I did put questions at the end, but of course, I anticipate that you might have some questions. So our progress to date. Since we began in earnest in May of 2024, we have met with internal staff who have subject area responsibilities on the various policy recommendation areas that were in the report. And in your written report that you received prior to this meeting, you've got a list of most of the staff members who we have met with to talk in detail about their work, about their planned work, about their budgets, and ways in which different departments or different functions of the city work together because many of these policy recommendations are sort of cross-sectional. We've reviewed your plans, the comprehensive plan. We've talked with folks about regional transportation plans. We have, of course, looked back at the YWCA Racial Equity Scorecard and a lot of different things that are pertinent and align with the work that we're doing. We've begun to interview key community partners. And I will say, of course, key community partners will expand as we move along. But there are certain groups that were instrumental in bringing us to this point or who are already working as partners with the city that we started with. And those are continuing to be scheduled in October. We've been identifying some relevant federal and state funding sources. And so we looked very widely at federal sources that could be brought to bear in some of these projects, everything from HUD, EPA, Department of Labor. On the state level, we're looking at the State Department of Commerce potentially, the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. Ultimately, all these things will depend on which policy areas you decide to focus on first. We also began gathering data on current and recent program expenditures so that when you get to the point of deciding what are the outputs and outcomes that you want to see in the next several years, we'll have a baseline from here's where we are in 2024 on, say, some housing aspect or some job training aspect. Here's the amount of money you spent, here's the outputs, and here's what you're driving toward in the future. We've also been looking at other municipalities in the state and around the country and who are engaged in similar projects and to learn from their progress and also their challenges because many of them have had challenges. So brief history. The One High Point Commission was created in February of 2022, began meeting several months after that, after you appointed its members. We began in March of 2023 to do project management. At that point, outside subject matter experts had been engaged, as well as us. We spent the next six months doing research, writing the report, and creating a set of recommendations, which you did accept, the recommendations and the policy report in September of 2023. And then in spring of 2024, we did some talking back and forth about what the implementation contract would look like, and we're able to begin in May of 2024. So as I mentioned, there's a lot of different potential funding sources that we've looked at. I didn't mention Department of Education, DOT, North Carolina Department of Information Technology. They're actually having to push out a lot of money. And so that could be brought to bear. There are also local funding. So local funding is a reality, both through general funds and bond financing. And many of the other cities that we've looked at did actually float bonds eventually in order to be able to raise a significant amount of money to do projects, particularly around housing, infrastructure, and economic development. And of course, there's private sources. Our thinking is that this will be the last group of sources that we'll look at because most of them give their funds to nonprofits. And so you'll have to have partners that will be able to be kind of a lead or a joint applicant for corporate and foundation funds. And this process of narrowing down your focus areas is what will allow us to determine who are the partners and then what are the funding sources. So there's a couple of reasons that we want to narrow down priority areas. First, and I didn't put it here, but we were working under the assumption that you didn't want to attack everything all at once. We didn't think we could really do battle on all fronts at the same time and that it would make most sense to identify three or four policy areas that we would focus on first. And then in 2025, we could narrow down on the rest. But policy priority areas that you identify, hopefully, to But policy priority areas that are, you identify hopefully today, will signify to outside partners your commitment to this process. It will establish which funding opportunities we pursue first, and it will alert your current and potential community partners of what direction you're heading in. So there may be community partners who are thinking about a certain thing, and once they know that this is the direction that the city is heading in, they may come to you with an opportunity versus always having to go to them. So we were asked to do some broad cost estimates of what implementation might look like, and this was a little bit of a challenge because it's wide open. But what we did is we looked at what other cities are spending or have spent in certain areas and came up with very broad estimates of what total cost could look like over a five-year period on implementation. So your feedback today will allow us to refine the project scope and then come back with real numbers in terms of what it looks like for budget implications for the city and what amount of money would need to be raised from outside sources in order to pursue the objectives. So one of the other things we were asked to do is to briefly review the policy recommendations and talk about the why. So we'll do that very quickly. Housing disparities, we talked about providing assistance, down payment assistance to low to moderate income buyers, particularly in racially concentrated areas of poverty because there is a documented thirty percent homeownership gap between the black and non-black population in the city of High Point. And so down payment assistance is a proven way to get people on the ladder to homeownership who don't have the wealth for down payments, and it's something that you all are already doing. Assisting low to moderate income homeowners in targeted areas with necessary help to keep them in their homes. So often, when we think about the, the wealth gap and homeownership gap, we think about purchasing homes, but we also recommended that you assist existing homeowners so they can stay in their homes, maintain the quality and value of their homes, and have an asset that they can pass on. Oftentimes, people are forced to purchase a home, not because they want to, but because they need urgent repairs or they need handicap accessibility changes that they cannot afford. This is also something that the city does based on the availability of funding from outside sources. So because, and we just wanted to highlight that homeownership is one of the main ways that families gain wealth. Most people gain wealth that they don't inherit through homeownership and small business, and so we've covered both of those things in this presentation. So the potential cost of the housing recommendations that we put for you, before you was eighty-three million dollars, and we estimate that that would assist fifteen hundred, seventeen hundred households in a five-year period. For transportation, I'll just say upfront, we did not come up with cost recommendations for transportation because of the number of outside partners and it's kind of the complexity of this area. We did talk with some of your staff in-house, and we did talk with Piedmont Triad Regional Council about this, but this would be something that we would have to really do some more work on transportation numbers, depending on which way you want to go with that. But the point of the transportation recommendations was to ensure that low and moderate income people, which you saw there was a graphic in your document that you received ahead of time, that there is a documented gap in access to reliable transportation between black and white residents in High Point. So the idea is that you would want to bring up some of the folks who don't currently have access to reliable transportation and make it more possible for them to get to city services, healthcare, education, and most of all, employment. And so that's looking at employment opportunities within the city, but also how does the city retain residents but facilitate their transportation to the jobs that are being created in your region that are good, high-paying jobs? We talked about education. This was an interesting topic to talk about with some of your staff because we looked at in the One High Point Commission Report, the kind of the legacy of the city's former segregated school system. Well, that doesn't exist anymore, but the impact of it does. However, the city doesn't have a lot of control over education. What you do have control over is the assets that you can bring to the table in working potentially with your county and the school board on location of schools, maintenance of schools in certain locations, and the degree to which you can marry development of schools and the major investment that goes into developing new schools with surrounding development. And so the idea is to not let schools be a one-shot investment on those few acres, but to have the development of schools or the renovation of schools be a catalyst for further development of housing and amenities within the community. So the potential cost that we have here is twenty million dollars, and that's really mostly depending on whether the city has land that it can offer, whether it wants to sell it, whether you are interested in participating through infrastructure, some of those other things. We also did put in a recommendation to facilitate ensuring that all of your residents have access to high-speed internet through fiber and devices. So we, at the Institute, were able to assist the state in developing its digital equity plan, and so we were exposed to a lot of great information about the extent to which there are still gaps in access, mostly has to do with income, but in some places, there are just physical gaps. So it's great to hear what you're doing with your city facilities, but the reality is that a lot of people are homebound, and so even having to go to a park or some other community facility to use the internet is still a challenge. For economic opportunities, we talked about supporting social entrepreneurs. And so what's a social entrepreneur? Because everyone doesn't know that term. A social entrepreneur is someone who may be creating a business, maybe creating a nonprofit, but they're doing it to solve a problem, so it has a public focus. And we recommended that you provide some grant funding essentially to some startups that are people in your own community who are best able to address the problems that they see around them. We talked about exposing young people to career opportunities and work opportunities through summer employment and also facilitating, not necessarily directly making loans, but helping to raise funds to support loans for small businesses in High Point. So the total cost of all those recommendations that we came up with sixteen million. And then in health, we had two recommendations, one of which is not on here, but it was about really pursuing healthy homes and abatement program. And so the city has done this in the past with lead abatement, and lead, lead paint is still an issue. Asbestos in homes, air quality, and the impact on health are still an issue in certain communities, particularly in communities that have a concentration of older homes. One of the things a lot of folks don't realize is that pursuing this kind of abatement work also goes a long way to actually renovating older homes because of the work that you necessarily have to do during abatement. So we recommended that, and we also recommended that the city look into partnering with healthcare providers and other community partners on putting healthcare facilities in neighborhoods where folks do not have them and don't have easy access to your main medical facilities. And once again, this could range from putting land into a project, raising money, infrastructure, it could be a number of things that you could do. And so the total for that would be up to twenty million. And we recommended that you look at your municipal practices to ensure that your current practices are not inadvertently, disparately impacting your communities. Oftentimes, folks don't realize that what seems like neutral policies were actually policies that are rooted in discriminatory practices, and so it's a useful undertaking for a lot of communities to ensure that they're really not doing harm without meaning to in the way that they enforce codes or do zoning or other everyday functions of the city. And so we recommended engaging an experienced, qualified firm to do that, and then if they found things that needed amelioration, to then go ahead and institute a program to do so. And the total for that, we estimated, would be a million dollars. One recommendation that does not have a monetary cost was to issue an apology, apology, excuse me, to African-Americans on behalf of the city of High Point for the city's previous discriminatory practices and policies. And this refers us back to some of the city's policies and practices that were documented in the One High Point Commission Report. It also responds to specific requests from some of the community members, community organizations, that encourage the city to do the One High Point Commission process in the beginning. So having gone over all of those policies, we're at a decision point, and the question is, what are the areas of implementation that council members want to prioritize? So today, we're going to use a text-to-poll method to determine three to four policy area, recommendation areas that you want to prioritize. We will come back to you with more detailed information, a menu, so to speak, so that you can look at what would be the impact at what level of engagement in a particular area. So just practically, what's the impact going to be if you find a way to do a hundred loans a year to small businesses versus fifty versus two hundred? So we want to be able to look at that and give you a lot of data so that you can make a decision what's the level of effort, output, and outcome that you're looking for. Once we have that, we'll be able to work with staff internally because one of the things we're really hoping to do, you're in kind of budget season almost for next year, pre-budget season, so to speak, so we want to make sure that we have enough time to work with your staff, who are going to be responsible for different pieces, to figure out how this works with what they are already planning to do next year and what the budget looks like in the future. There are also several really exciting opportunities at the federal level that are open right now, so we don't want to miss those windows.
Leah, a question. You said that you had some discussion with community partners. I've had folk, I've had community partners from, say, the medical, the medical areas who are really interested in the work that we're doing here and some of the recommendations coming forward. Have you, have you broached the subject with the medical community, with philanthropic community, with kind of detailed who the community partners are that you had these conversations?
We've talked with welfare reform, PTRC, like you mentioned, YWCA. We've got some meetings coming up with this is High Point and a few others. So we were doing some of the ones that are kind of the most obvious ones, no matter what you choose to focus on first, but once we can get through this process, then we would go to the healthcare systems and things like that. So we're also looking, for instance, you have a great model underway right next door in Greensboro, right, where the city has worked with the healthcare system, and so we're excited about being able to have that model to talk to folks about, but we wanted to make sure that that was something that you all wanted to focus on in the upcoming year. Did I miss any partners that we've scheduled?
Gilford Works.
Okay, right, so we've also, Gilford Works as well, to talk about job creation and job programs.
So you need everyone to scan the QR code next?
Yes, you're there. So, so if you can scan the QR code now, we have several people who can help you if it doesn't come up for you correctly. We also have the website if that works.
I'm just kidding.
But I need you, actually, Adam.
So can we just move these around?
Right, yes, you just move them according to how you, it should be some arrows.
So first, you select the actual policy recommendation, and then from there, on the left-hand side, scroll to go up or down.
Oh.
Yes, click and then it's a wide side.
All right. Three or four, Leah, three or four.
Well, it's really up to you, so what will happen is that
Well, I guess it'll sort it out.
It will sort it, and then you all will see what your group priorities are.
He just said, "Tyrone always leaves us out."
It's the report you have, so make sure you have a look at it.
After you've completed the survey, please just make sure you see the final screen that says, "Thank you." So you have to hit submit at the bottom, then at the top, on the right-hand side, you have to hit finish as well. So your survey has not been submitted unless you did submit and finish. And it'll show you a screen that says, "All done, thank you for..."
Well, you just put them all in order, from top to bottom.
So when you tap it, it'll show you arrows.
And we have pictures in the photo board, just in case. It's like, you know what you're seeing.
We won't show the results until everyone has completed them. One, so that we don't influence anyone's, but also because we don't want anyone else to be able to grab that QR code off the final screen.
I think there's only three of us.
I'm just outside Boomer, you know, Gen X.
I think there's only three of us.
Wow.
I'm the babyest of boomers.
I have, I have hoped he would put those in there. I hope it was, I hope it was intuitive, but I, I, I feel like I need to ask. Adam, we'll, we'll discuss your concerns later. I mean, because are you afraid this is going to become Skynet or something like that?
I'm very techie, so I don't know.
Yes and no.
Technology's easy for me. I just don't keep up with the slang.
Missile defense.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, you think about the chat, the U T and the swatting thing, if somebody can create a thing.
But, but, but no, the, the voice, I, I use the voice in my podcast. I use the voice, AI, AI in my podcast. So like, say, for instance, if I record something, or it doesn't sound like, I pre-recorded my voice on my podcast editor, and I just type in the words that I want to change, and it, it reinserts with my voice into my podcast.
Are you using anything like a Lettuce L M to do?
Um, Descript.
Descript. Have you done notebook L L M?
I have not, I have not.
So if you take, like, say you're preparing a podcast or something like that, minutes, and you want to see how it sounds, conversation?
Sure.
You can take it, drop it in there, and it will do two virtual hosts having a conversation, podcasting about whatever you drop.
Nice, nice.
Check that out.
I will.
I have to say, most of you did much better with this than I did when they showed me.
Are we still waiting on folks to do it?
We're waiting on one, so we have eight finished and one underway.
We do a lot of reading on AI, security aspects, and we also use it in the functions, but being a defense contractor...
Leah, inside the health, I'm assuming that's also food insecurity, food access?
Right, we did have a recommendation to support community gardens at a higher level than you are now. That was the only food-specific recommendation. So, yes, health disparities fourth, municipal operations fifth, and then education, and last was the municipal apology. So what we are looking for from you at this point is some guidance on whether you agree with this methodology of choosing three or four now, getting going in earnest so you can see activity in 2025, and then coming back to you next year to dig in on the others, and whether you would like to look at three or four of them.
Leah, thank you so much. I'll jump right in. I think the top three is what I'd probably lean our focus into. I think once you get beyond the top three, you start getting into things that probably just aren't in the purview of local government. Not saying that we can't impact all of those other four, but the other piece that stands out to me is that we've got strategic priorities that are already in the works that align with these top three. We're already heavily invested into a housing fund that will address housing disparities, and as a part of the 2045 plan, us beginning to look at housing disparities, a lot of what I think that policy does, once we get our unified development ordinance figured out, will enable us to do some deconcentration of certain areas of poverty and be able to invest in areas that were historically marginalized and disenfranchised. So I just saw the top three as aligning with where sort of our attention is right now and also having the best fit with what's in purview of local government.
Yeah, I agree, Leah. And also think that addressing those top three, particularly transportation, can also have some mitigating effects on number four. Having, giving folks better access to healthcare facilities, getting, being able to get folks to food, better food access, I think that may have some tangential effect in improving number four. So I think if we really lean into the top three, I think we can see some kind of downballot improvement on some of the other issues.
And I do want to point out that we will continue to work on the other policy areas, and you have both pointed out, they require a lot more work with partners, a lot more digging in to figure out what's the correct public-private partnerships, but we won't just drop them. It's just that these three areas then would be the ones that we'd be working immediately with staff on implementation plans.
And that's not to say that if we come across an opportunity to maybe address one of those that you guys won't bring back, like, say, hey, we have this really great opportunity that can address health disparities, you know, if you want to act on it in this window.
Absolutely. Right, so as funding opportunities or other kinds of partnerships come, you know, come to the fore, we would certainly bring them forward, you know, particularly because a lot of things, you know, if they don't come back around, if we see something that hits now, then we would definitely let your staff know now. So I'm not sure how we want to finish out, other than to say, I guess the consensus is that the top three will be the three we'll move forward on. So now we can immediately go back to the staff that have the most responsibility in these areas to begin to talk about what the plans are now, what the budgets are now, and what you want to do in the years looking forward. So we're looking at kind of a five-year trajectory, because a lot of these things do take a few years to really show outcomes. We'll also be working with Dr. Stephen Sills, who actually is going to be available to work with us, on what outcome measures really look like, how you're going to measure them, and how we'll be able to report back that you don't just have outputs, but that you have outcomes that meet the goal of closing the gaps. And so we, our, sorry. So our goal is to start working on that in the next couple of months, and then we would come back to you for an update, you know, at your pleasure.
Right, but before we transition, I want to make sure that every council member's got a chance, in case you've got some questions or even some concerns about what's up here. We'd love to know what those thoughts are.
Well, it's not really a concern, but my question is, with reviewing the municipal operations, I know, for example, the planning department is reviewing the zoning regulations and all of the guidelines around that, and I just don't know, if we don't do, apply this filter at the same time, when we get to that priority, will we have to go back and redo work that they're already going to spend months and months reviewing? That's my only concern on that.
Please.
Thank you. This is City Manager Tasha Logan-Ford, for those of you that may be listening online. One of the things that we're preparing now is our request for qualifications to have a consultant come alongside with the city to help us do this. So I think there may be some time for staff to explore whether or not that could be an ask that we put as part of that process, so that we can have someone that's thinking about it on the front end. We're not going to go through and just do a kind of a holistic rewrite. There'll be stages and phases that we're doing this. This is not something we can do all in one era, all at one time. So I do think, you know, keeping that in mind and trying to have that conversation with consultants on the front end might help us to identify if there's somebody that can help us with that, as we're starting to review those in a systematic manner. So that may be a way that we'll try to address that on the front end.
Yeah, and as this one, as we were looking at it, Councilwoman Cook, I recall that several years ago, council back in 2020, as a result of a lot of the discussions that were taking place, felt that we needed to lean in more into things that could uplift equity in terms of the government, like City Hall. So when you talk about hiring and permitting, MWB, so on, that's where a lot of that came from. So we created a fair hiring policy that came out of that, leadership development that came out of that, MWB department that came out of that. I believe Mr. Biggs' position came as a result of that. And so I, it's not to say that we're perfect in it, but we've done so much work to lean into that. I think my other thought is, you know, on the way towards checking some of these other boxes, housing, economic, transportation, on the way there, you're inevitably going to have to plow through some of these other conversations, which will make you check that box to the degree that it helps you get to some of these things.
But we're definitely going to go ahead and include all the work that we've done in, okay, because I kind of, we're working right now on economic opportunity with GTCC and making sure the community gets involved, and so I just want to make sure, because we're doing a lot of the work, and just including that in what's happening.
Yeah, you know, that's a great point. I don't know how much you all are taking stock or taking an inventory of some of the most recent things we've done, and it's very new stuff, so it wouldn't have some level of output yet, that we could probably see yet. But that hiring policy did get adjusted, it was within our personal resolution. I mean, it's only been a couple of years. And so I'd love to see how some of these things that are new policy things that we've done, new positions that have been hired and created, how they're stacking up with some of this, so then we can begin to say, you know, rather, you know, some of these things we are beginning to address, and maybe we just need to see them sort of come to fruition. I know the housing piece is one that we just have not really jumped all the way in on, and we're starting to. Transportation's a huge one that we've sort of had, in my opinion, a number of false starts on, no offense to anyone involved in that, I just, I think we got to really find a way to make that happen. But economic opportunity, there's a lot of new things that have been created as a result of that and some other pieces.
Yeah.
And the school bond piece, I mean, we're years out from seeing the school bond come to fruition, but hopefully the school bond does what it does. It helps with some of the educational disparities that are listed here too.
So we certainly are taking stock of all of the great things that are happening in High Point. I probably, I read much more, I can say I read much more news about High Point than where I actually live, so, because there are a lot of amazing things going on in terms of sort of the community partnerships and some of the development and job creation that's happening here. So we're excited about that, and we do definitely want to capture that and be able to look at from today and say, five years from now, how does the community look different, and how did it impact the people who have been less advantaged than others, let's say, in your economic life as a city? So we're going to be looking at how this aligns with the comprehensive plan and some of the other plans that you have in the works. We have talked somewhat with the firm that was doing the disparity study, so we are trying to track all of the different things that you all are doing. And we neglected to say that you have already implemented some things that were in the report with the fair housing ordinance and some of the work you're doing around fair housing. So we will be recognizing the things, the wins along the way in the progress.
Leah, well, we also have a comparative analysis against other areas who are engaged in similar work. Not a competition, mind you, but
It can be.
I didn't want to say it, I'm glad you said it. But just to be able to look at impact based on maybe region and how it affects the impact, maybe from a regional standpoint.
Absolutely. I think it'll be very interesting to see the different ways in which different municipalities are measuring the impact. I think that your approach is actually more holistic and comprehensive than a lot of other cities, and so it may turn out that there's not a great direct comparison. What I think it will allow you to do is to document the ways in which High Point is sort of setting the standard on this kind of work. But now, Leah.
Leah, thank you so much, and thank you also to members in your team who are here as well, and thank you to our city staff who have been heading up this. Ms. Hollis, did you have anything else you wanted to add to this, or?
No, I think between the consultant and the manager, I think we got it all, Adam. Thank you, sir.
Okay. If there's other council members with questions, just make sure that we get those shared so we have some discussion on it. And if all matters have been confirmed for the meeting, we'll go ahead and stand the journey.
Thank you.